Okay, welcome to the December eighteenth Board of Education Retreat Workshop. Would you, starting with the short technical delay, please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a roll call, Kim?
Yes, I want to.
Okay. Well, we are very pleased to have a special guest with us. We are joined by Sandra Ruffo, who is the President-Elect of the New York State School Boards Association. Sandra, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight. Thank you.
Before we get started with that, I just want to thank Sandra for coming and meeting with the board this evening and also taking time out of her day today to travel around many of our schools in our district. It was a fun day of excitement and joy and looking at the wonderful faces of our students in our classrooms. And I think she had a fun visit today, and I'll invite her up in a moment to speak. But for those of you that don't know, as Victor mentioned, Sandra is the President-Elect of the New York State School Boards Association. She has currently been serving for over eight years in our specific area, the Region Four, Ms. Director. And she comes with a lot of board experience, and so it was a great getting to visit with her today. And I know there's a lot of exciting things happening, but she's really here for a special opportunity to congratulate one of our board members. And so without further delay, I'm going to turn things over to Sandra.
Thank you so much. Truly, it was very exciting to be here. I'm sure that you all know as board members, I met two of you because I was here May fourth of twenty fifteen on the first districts that I visited. My goal was to visit all of the new districts in Area Four. So I visited in six of the eight districts when I first got on as Board Director. But you have an absolutely phenomenal district, and I've been to a lot of districts. The resources that you have for your students, I think are second to none. I haven't been on any other school, but it's the resources that you have, the level that you have for all of your students. So you should be very, very proud of your district. I do have a special recognition today because one of your board members has achieved the District Lifetime Achievement Award, which is Level Four. And what that means is that individual has done a lot of continuing education, attended conferences, et cetera. So at this time, it gives me great pleasure to give to Victor if he would like to come on. First, we have an executive. And you have a letter here that talks all about your award. You have a complimentary certificate or convention.
Okay, we'll take that.
And your plaque, which says, "Board Lifetime Achievement Award to Victor Jenkins of Baltimore School District for Participation in the New York State School Boards Association, Leadership Development and Opportunities totaling five hundred points." So that's a quickie, Sandra. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. And I will, I just want to say that the educational programs that I've attended have been excellent. A lot of practices, a lot of ideas you taught with today, and Sandra bringing up some ideas, many of which we do because I guess we heard them from New York State Conventions and stuff where we tended to. Thank you. Okay, I've lost my place now, but I think, are we ready to do the pledge dedication, Joe?
Sure. We are offset to move forward to the first of many two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five pledge work sessions. So what we have this evening is a presentation that incorporates our total budget as it stands right now. As I will emphasize throughout this evening, this is a work in progress. We are ahead of the schedule compared to where we've been in the past. We have had an opportunity to work with our community advisory groups to provide feedback and suggestions related to the various components of this budget, our facilities, instructional technology, athletics, and transportation, special education or student services, and our administrative components. So we're going to start to, hopefully this turns into a conversation. So if you have questions throughout the way, please stop. The directors, because you've had an opportunity to look at this entire presentation, are not going to go through slide by slide. They're going to try to focus in on a few key points that we feel are representative of where we are and what we have put into this work. So as I mentioned, let me just move this way here. Our budget development process began early in September of twenty twenty-three. We've worked through, we're at this point right now where we are having our first budget work session. We will have another budget work session in January with the hope of adopting our budget once we've had a sense of where the executive stadium here looks like back in January, adopting of that budget on March fourth. We have the public hearing that we're scheduled for May thirteenth, and then the budget vote third Tuesday and then February twenty-first. So this evening, you're going to get a brief overview of all of the various components as mentioned. This is new for this year. We're breaking mark each of the components, so you'll see a total number of where we stand now. I want to ground us with the fact that this budget, as previous budgets, is about our students, and there is a representation of current, we have five thousand four hundred twenty-seven in district students that are working within our schools, our five elementary schools, our middle school, our junior high school, and our high school. I'm going to turn things over to Renee, who will kick us off with highlights from the instructional budget.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm going to look at my own screen here so I don't have to toggle back and forth because I can't look at my glasses and my screen at the same time. So in the instructional budget, in the next slide, so this is where you're going to see the majority of our money from this budget is because we have people. We have kids, fifty-five hundred kids almost, and so we have a lot of people that are required to support those students. So you'll see here some numbers that obviously will fluctuate based on enrollment, and then I have some nice pictures on the next slide of our students, and a lot of the things that they are involved in over the course of the day, the teachers and the staff that support our students. So we'll start on slide eight. So in this one, this is the slide that everybody loves to see because there's a decrease happening here, and that's just due to the role change from Deputy Superintendent to Assistant Superintendent. So hopefully there's not really any questions on that. On the, on slide nine, so this is our supervision for regular schools. So you can see the one highlight here would be the support for our Fine Arts Department. We're looking to put a position in here. So you'll see that that increase in that budget line. And on slide ten, so this is our, the increase that you see here is due to our addition to our learning coach and the adaptive technology learning coach. And you'll also see our Bosie services here, and those Bosie services numbers, we are generating like a five percent increase in those, but until we get our final requests in, it's hard to know where those numbers will will end up. So you'll see your overall percentage increase there of eleven point six percent. On slide eleven, this is where you're going to see, obviously, all of our teacher salaries. So we've got several increases that you're going to see that I've highlighted here. You'll see the step increases, which are contractual. You'll see the equipment, you'll see a decrease there because of the shift in the music instruments that we purchased. That was a one-time purchase, and we go, that goes through Bosie Arts and Ed now, so we get aid back on that, on those funds. And you'll also see a decrease in the, a shifting of funds, I should say. You'll see that seventy-two thousand went down to twenty thousand, but you'll see in the next line that money just shifted over to the charter schools where we are required to make payments. So that's slide eleven. And then on slide twelve, you'll see our CTE programs through Bosie, so grades nine through twelve. You'll see a, we've budgeted a five percent increase there. And on slide thirteen, you'll see the summer schools. Those are just regular increases that we would see for that. And on slide fourteen, the preschool. So our preschool salaries are currently ramp funded, but we have budgeted in the event that we need an additional preschool section, so we're just anticipating those needs, and if we don't need that, this will generate fund balance for the district.
Okay. Can I ask you?
Yeah.
So are we anticipating additional UPK facilities-wise? Do we have room for any additional UPK?
So we, I believe we do have room, and Joe has the preliminary numbers on the UPK students, but those really tend to fluctuate as they always move in and out of the district.
And a lot of it depends right now for the physical space. If we have other sections that are going off in a building, so fifth grade going from a fourth, from four sections to three sections, that's where we typically see the availability for a classroom. So we do have some flexibility in the event that we need to add another UPK section.
On slide fifteen, though, that's self-explanatory. That's for our attendance officer and for our student management system or school tool. And on slide sixteen, you'll see the increases here are due to the district taking on those curricular activities for the play, we're taking on after-musical funding. So you'll see the major increases for that budget there.
And also the elementary enrichment opportunities, the after-school clubs that we've grown accustomed to. Now, it is possible if we do receive additional funding, whether it's Title Four or the Recubes Grant, which I know Renee hates me bringing that up because we're
We're still waiting.
We're still waiting.
We're still waiting.
We have the ability to offset this, this cost and to generate some additional fund balance. But as you think about the work that we've done aligned to our strategic plans about creating opportunities for all students, and we have done that with the extra school, the after-school opportunities at the elementary level to mimic the work that's been done at the secondary schools.
So you'll see the summary for this is that we're almost a three percent increase for this total budget from last year to this year. So if there are, if you have specific questions about any one of those slides, I know I might do them pretty quickly, but I, most of the information you have, an opportunity to look at, so I didn't want to waste time, but if you have any questions.
I have a couple of quick questions. In regards to like for Bosie's, is there, do we ever go through all the different things and decide if some of these are things we don't need anymore and stuff like that to kind of balance out the increase in that?
Yeah, so this year, we had, Tiffany gave us a whole list of all of the services that we currently use, and then we go through as a team, and we make sure that we're either still using those services or if we need to increase or decrease or eliminate those services.
One of the other pieces to our cabinet meetings too, the business office has created a scanning agenda item for service adjustments. We haven't necessarily had it in the past, so anytime, you know, we need to make an adjustment, we have that discussion, and that gets added to our list, so we need to keep track of putting in our service request as things change throughout here and making sure that they're there. We also have OCMBOSI's coming to meet with us right after the holiday break in January, January third. They will do a service visit with us, so their administrative cabinet comes, meets with us, go through everything, they highlight some additional services that are new, and we do plan on having Bosie's come, the district superintendent, to present where things are at, that we, the services we provide to the board in one of our work sessions. I want to say that's in March.
I have one more question. One last one. Okay. My other question is, I believe there's going to be changes with the funding and whatnot for SROs and SRPOs. Is that something, I'm guessing that we've kind of planned out in the lectures?
Yes, so they were in a grant, and now they're being out of the grant, so we are taking it into account. And I believe we have an additional SRPO, correct, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a potential for a safety position, but that's, again, there's flexibility to fund balance in the event that we have to shift for other instructional positions. And then, I'm pretty sure when Victor joined, he had mentioned something about having some kind of safety commissioner is not the word, but coordinator, I guess. So I wasn't sure what's that, what the additional position would be. Yes, we do have that in here, and depending on how the board feels when we adopt the budget, where we are with our bottom number, we have those, again, tentatively, we have everything that we want in this budget, and we'll look to make potential productions as we need based on our final number.
This, this budget and for the instructional budget, it maintains all of our current programming. Nothing gets cut, so it just expand, it maintains and expands on, you know, our fine arts and our health and safety.
Thank you. And one good thing, on the aidable part of the play musical, it's, that's something that we pay for upfront, but we end up getting that aid back. Is that on a three-year cycle or is it just the following?
The following year.
So we pay this year, and then we get that aid back, so we'll end up recouping a year later.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Which is the hope of how we built that program, is that we can continue to expand it. I think we spoke briefly at the last meeting about how neighboring districts have done that, the issue of spend more, and that comes back, and we're trying to track it to be able to then increase that budget line further.
And so one of the pieces, you know, God forbid we get stuck with a period of time where we have to make budget reductions. The fact that we've built these programs into that area of the budget where we have revenue coming in, we're more likely to keep because we don't want to have then a reduction in the revenues coming in, the aid coming in. So I think for us, it's a pretty smart way of making sure that, you know, God forbid there's situations with finances, we can maintain those supports for our students and programs.
And, I got a quick question that I thought I heard maybe in a prior meeting. Is that a number? I thought I heard like seventy-five or something, I'm not sure.
Approximately, yeah, for every seventy-five cents, for every dollar we spend, we get seventy-five cents back on aid, so it's really costing the district around twenty-five cents.
And just because we'll talk about aid as we go through these, so there's, out there, there are like all of our aid numbers, like open percentages, but keep in mind that it's not always as transparent as the aid number on the page. There's often deducts along the way for one thing or another. You'll hear that come up in transportation tonight. There's deduct miles, depending on specific trips that we take. At Bosie's, there's certain things that are deducted from that percentage that you see on the state aid run. So it fluctuates a little bit, just for full transparency.
Just one quick question here. How does community participation in the budget process?
So we, that, our community meeting was the largest one out of all of the budget meetings that were, I'm trying to remember, maybe ten?
It's pretty consistent to prior years, ten, twelve.
Ten, twelve, yeah.
So with that, we will, we will flip to student services, and we have Carrie Lamont here, who is doing with us a brief update.
Good evening, everyone. I will process the student services, special education piece by saying, we don't know always exactly what's going to happen sort of like for special education, especially looking into a crystal ball. A lot of what we're projecting is dependent on aid meetings that haven't happened yet. And also, you know, a good thing is a lot of families move into the Baltimore area for our special education programs, so we do get a lot of transfer in students with needs that we can't necessarily anticipate. So we are, you know, that's a piece that I think is important to keep in mind. On the first few slides, you'll see similar to Renee's budget or the curriculum budget, much of the increase here you will see is dedicated to the students and the services directly that are supporting them, and you can see that on those first few slides before we go into those highlights. And then the first special education program, two, two, five, zero, really the important thing to note here, you'll see all of the slides are sort of set up in a way where you'll see similar things, instructional salaries, non-instructional salaries that have contractual raises, and then equipment codes, which are per cost of things over a thousand dollars, which we are able to anticipate and really estimate in there what we need. We can be mindful of those equipment pieces and supplies and materials, but the student services part, that's the trickier part, and you will see the fifteen percent increase here is directly related to student services and Bosie's programs that were needed. We have some students in residential settings, and we are anticipating a few more, so we're trying to be mindful of the cost of those things, and just one of those things can really offset the budget here, so that's a little bit tricky. On the next slide, you will see guidance services, and that was in addition to this budget. That's a change because it was under curriculum before, so with the alignment of cabinet and student services, that was kind of moved into here. So you'll see that there are similar salaries, materials, supplies, and then Bosie's services here is for testing, state testing for grades three through eight. On the next slide, health services are similar to special education, and, you know, they can project out those higher equipment costs, they have materials and supplies for each nursing office, the salaries, they do contract out for services just like special education, which is a service, not a goods. Sometimes we have to contract out for services for preschool or a health, we have a physician, or they might need equipment fixed, so you'll see those things in there. And again, this is a change into this budget as part of the alignment of the cabinet. The next, you'll see psychological services, those are psychologists. Here, materials and supplies are related to the testing supplies they need for those evaluations they complete. On the next slide, you'll see social workers, and then the next is people personnel services. And here, the salaries, you'll see it here, that, that money is set aside for during a crisis, so it's money that's set aside in the event that we need support staff to stay after hours around the weekends, and we do support both instructional and non-instructional staff when those things happen. And then sometimes we need supplies. There's some conference meeting traveling here for specialized professions where they might need to go to a conference to get their professional development. And then on the next slide, there's nine-nine-zero-one, that's a transfer to other funds. That's kind of a funny one. That's our special education summer school program, and that's because we get aid back on that, so you'll see that looks a little bit different, and there is a little bit of fund balance in here as well. And then on the last slide there, you'll just see overall, we are looking at a thirteen point six percent increase, and that is, again, we tried to be mindful of, we saw the increase with the needs in our, in our department, the students following COVID. We're, our identification rate is about fifteen percent, which prior to COVID was thirteen percent, so it is a bit, but really it's the intensity of the students that are already identified and the needs that they have. And you'll see we were trying to be really mindful of equipment, materials, supplies. We're not asking, we do feel like we have great support in our departments as far as we're in a great place with the teaching staff, our teaching assistants, our social workers, psychologists, counselors, our, all of our other programs that we have in place to support them. So really, the increase you're seeing here is related to directly supporting student needs.
Are there specific questions for Carrie, related to our student services budget? The one area I wanted to highlight, on that one slide, we're listed the salary. I just want to point this out, one good, that is not an additional administrative position. There was a position that was in the instructional budget and now has been shifted given the realignment of the cabinet structure, so just to be clear that it's not anything.
And some, some of those other ones where you'll see like a zero and then there's a cost, those were positions that were paid for out of a grant prior. And again, maybe we'll get the Recubes Grant.
So I know in the past, New York State has a target percent of, it seems to be around twelve percent. So if we're over that, do we get, do they audit or question us at all?
No, it's really, there's sort of a range, and so really until you're, you're hitting like seventeen or eighteen percent, we're within what we should, we would be expected to be based in our population of students. It's just something that we're required, we do a lot of state reporting, and so we're required to always monitor and show what we're doing to keep track of those things, that we're doing RPI, that we're using MTSAs, that we're being mindful of all those things. And we do that annually with reports that we have to provide to the state.
Other questions? This will generate more questions, I'm sure, for our next work session. We will move on to athletics. Chris is actually tied up right now, so I said that we have, we have worked through his, his budget just to highlight where we stand. So these are the total number of coaching positions that we have in the district. And you know, we are certainly proud of the fact that over the course of last school year and this year, we've seen students' success on the athletic fields, courts, both at the Section Three Championships, as well as the New York State Public High School Athletic Association championships. That first graph, that middle graphic represents all of the national signings, so this year we made a point to make sure that we're having the national signings for both Division One, Two, and Three athletes. So we're certainly proud of where our student athletes are at. Above and beyond the work on the fields, they are also excelling in classrooms, and many of our student athletes are considered scholar athletes because designated by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, New York State Education Department. There are some highlights that I won't read for you, but you know from our board recognition, there was a lot of success this fall. When you look at his overall budget, this budget for twenty-one, ten, this is regular physical education, teaching, you see pretty consistent numbers. We're buying most of the equipment, requesting material supplies related to just updates to what we currently are providing to students. This is the co-curricular intramural program, so it's part of our friend-to-friend intramural budget for the secondary level students. We provide these options and funding available for making sure that our staff are there to support those programs. The overall athletic program, you'll see a brief slate increase, just over a hundred thousand dollars. Again, this allows us to run our programs. And what I want to highlight here is the fact that over the course of this school year and last school year, we've added additional assistant coaches at the, at the, at all of these levels based on student interest in need. And then we've also expanded and added more varsity programs. And then we've also expanded and added more varsity programs. Two specifically that stand out are girls wrestling and the girls playing football. In this budget, we do have funding set aside if for some reason we have the interest to pursue the girls ice hockey as well. So we're again basing our staffing on student interest in programs. For your overall summary, around a six percent increase. Questions related to the athletic budget? Oh, yes. Kim, thank you for reminding. There's also an increase in here. Right now, we have one point five athletic trainers through, that year that we, we are actually looking to increase the athletic training from a one point five TE to two point oh. So that, that's going to help manage all of the things that's had going on. So it's considering the athletic training support thing they need.
Just in addition to that, there's our year to go back now, with RFP for the athletic trainer as well. So we do RFPs on a regular basis for some of these services. It's a multi-year.
I'm going to slip back there regarding technology, but it's a.
Hiding.
Hiding. But we got you covered if you're, this is.
I always have a plan B, C, and D.
RJ's budget is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, this one. Hi, everybody. I apologize, but sometimes, you know, technology. The, the biggest thing to kind of discuss for my budget today is just a change in the structure of my department. Got some people retiring and thought long and hard about what we need to have for personnel moving forward. So I asked to decrease one land tech and add one systems administrator. So much of what we do now is database management, account management, that I really needed somebody that understands that to take over that position. We don't have quite as much break fix like we used to have when there was more PCs. And, you know, things have gotten, technically, things have gotten a little bit easier for us to manage. Although we have ten times as many pieces of equipment that we had, the Chromebooks have made it pretty easy to manage. And so that systems admin is in charge of a lot of that kind of thing. Account maintenance, data protection as far as, you know, who gets an email, who gets assigned what permissions and all that stuff. So that, we've been doing that, but now we've asked to make that position official. So I have a network administrator, hopefully a systems administrator for land techs and helpless operator in my department. Some of the highlights for this year, we really, you know, our replacement cycle has been supported very well by the board and budget in the past. So we're on target with that. So in the past year or so, I've been targeting more upgrading on our large instructional spaces, including, you know, gyms, cafeterias, large group rooms, making sure the equipment in there works, the AV equipment, so that we can have, you know, remote instruction in those areas if we need to, et cetera. So the pictures that we have up there, a lot of the upgrades that we've done in those areas, libraries. We've put some emphasis in getting really good equipment for our media production courses. We have a top-notch media production courses and, and equipment and output. So if you keep, if you keep up with it, you'll see even the kids at Ray are getting into it now. There's a, there's a Ray News group up. If you haven't seen one of their episodes, you got to watch. They are, they are so good. So we spent, you know, we, we spent some effort in those areas this year. But other than that, the budget's pretty much the same. In fact, I think it only went up one point three percent, which is a difference of thirty seven thousand dollars. There's a little bit of breakage in there with new personnel coming in that are, that are younger on the totem pole than some of the people retiring. And really, most of that increase is probably right in the salary and in the, the BOSEs. Because we don't actually ever know exactly what BOSEs is going to cost. So we project, I don't know, three or four percent higher. And then when it comes in, we've got, you know, we usually have enough to cover that cost. So I'd be happy to take questions. Love that sort.
Questions for RJ with technology? We'll shift to transportation.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, our department is currently one hundred and forty-nine people. We hope in the very near future to be closer to one sixty, just so we have better coverage for the drivers. As you look at the highlights up on the screen, what I'm most proud of with this department currently is how we are student-centered. We do not like using the word no here. If we can make it happen for the benefit of the students, we absolutely will. As you look at the fifty-five, ten codes, all of those numbers up there on that screen are contractual. And currently, there is negotiations going on between CSAC, which are the drivers, attendants, and mechanics and the districts. So those are subject to change at this time, but not significantly. And then we go into the fifty-five, thirty codes. A lot of those, we do not have any control over, obviously, fire liability insurance, et cetera. We don't have control over that. You will notice that on equipment, the two hundred line, we do not have any large price purchases that we need to make or that we forecast that we have to make. We budgeted for that for this school year for a new shop truck, more of a mobile garage, if you will. And of course, still has not even gone into production, but we, we knew that was going to happen going into it. Then you can just see the, the budget summary there. Much less of an overall increase projected for going into next year than what we experienced going into this year. And a lot of that was because of parts increases across the board in order to keep our fleet in tip-top shape. Could we fast forward to the proposed bus purchases, please? Once Joe gets there, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit of the same and a little bit different than the proposed. So the first ring that you see up there, that is the proposed purchase of fourteen school buses with diesel engines. We have been purchasing gas engines since, for the last five years, I believe. Unfortunately, the gas engine manufacturer is no longer producing them, so we need to convert back to diesel. So there's a little bit of an increased cost there. I would like to thank the board and the community for the support, allowing us to purchase fourteen buses. It has allowed for us, by the time we get into next year, to get back on our ten-year rotation, which is very, very important. The cost savings is tremendous when you look at maintaining the vehicles if we limit it to ten years. So total cost there, two point five million. That includes ten full-size school buses, one full-size bus with a wheelchair lift, two thirty-passenger, what I like to call short chassis buses. Forget about the van-style buses that you see rolling around the road. We're, we're not going to use those anymore as soon as we eliminate them from the fleet. And then one thirty-passenger short chassis bus for fourteen total. Now for something different, the zero emission vehicles. The feedback that Kim, Joe, and I have been getting is we are far ahead on, on the curve in terms of planning and preparation for the zero emission mandate. It begins to go into effect in twenty twenty-seven, which states that we must purchase nothing but zero emission vehicles starting in the year twenty twenty-seven, with your entire fleet being zero emissions by twenty thirty-five. Let's not even go there right now. It causes me to lose sleep. What we are proposing is the purchase of two zero emission electric school buses, full-size. One, we, we've worked with two dealers at this point. One of the purchases would be coming from the dealer that we have been purchasing our school buses from, which they are known as IC buses. They're built in Oklahoma. The other one is a dealership called New York Bus, and those are Bluebird buses. I've had the pleasure of driving both of them within the last week. Kim has had the pleasure of riding on one. And what we want to do is get a couple of them in here and compare them side by side for a year or two before we have to start purchasing them. Because as you can see on the screen, the purchase price is much greater. We are in the process of applying for the round three of the EPA grant for both of the proposed electric vehicles. In addition to that, New York State just opened up what is called the New York State Bus Incentive Program, which is designed to bridge the gap between the cost of a diesel bus and an electric bus. So that's a whole lot of information, you know, very short amount of time, but I just wanted to summarize it for you the best I could. So I'd like to open it up for questions.
Just one thing to point out about the electric buses is when we're looking at this, the period of time that the state is going to need those buses is much longer than the diesel buses. So that's part of why you see the over twelve years there versus our typical buses are over five years. And just one of the things I would say, as Mike was talking about this, is every time we have a conversation about zero emission vehicles or zero emission vehicle chargers, we're moving. It's always new, different, changing information. So we have kind of really narrowed down. We are in a good position because we have power. They just brought a new power line through here a summer or two ago.
Two summers.
For Anheuser Busch. So the other thing is that this is a new facility, so we have power within our building as well. So right now, we have been talking where a lot of people, a lot of districts are getting stuck, is when they start trying to do the chargers and having the infrastructure for that. So we had our electrician here actually this morning looking at how much it would cost us to actually get chargers close to our building because we don't want to get into trenching and all those other things that could come in the future. So we are feeling very confident that it's very realistic, the, the costs we don't have in our hands yet. But we don't foresee a huge amount of construction costs necessary in order for us to put two chargers in a reasonable location on this facility along with those two buses that we would be getting. And there's grants for the chargers as well.
Just had a question about additional equipment, training for your mechanics, those kinds. Is that necessary within the buses and is that built in here?
I'm, I'm glad you brought it up. It has not been built into this specific budget in terms of the cost of the vehicles. A lot of what we're going to be doing when we first hopefully get these vehicles in is just kind of playing around with them. Yes, there's going to be a learning curve for the mechanics for myself. We're going to have to develop training programs for the drivers. I can tell you just driving, you know, less than five miles in two of them, they respond completely different. You will have to change your driving habits because a lot of, a lot of it is regenerative, ah, I can't talk to it. Regen braking. You let off the accelerator pedal, the vehicle starts slowing down. That puts power back into the battery packs. So there, it's, it's going to be a long learning process for all involved, but it is not built specifically into this budget.
The only other piece that I wanted to add with over these is we're looking at two separate propositions. At least that's the proposal that we would have for you. And, you know, that way it allows our school community to weigh in on where they stand with the zero emission. And, you know, hopefully, we're expecting and hoping that things are going to turn out as positive. But if for some reason they didn't, it would allow, you know, our district to then have additional data that can go back to the legislators and the executive office to, you know, consider just like other school districts across the state. So it's a, that's a way to hopefully not have also our regular replacement plan impacted by bundling that all together.
So quick, two quick, the, the shop truck, is it in this year's budget?
That is, that is correct, our current year.
So, so that's pretty much done. We don't have to worry about that.
That is correct.
I understand the EVs are, are state mandated, and so we just kind of have to think our way around things. And start off by saying that we're kind of ahead of the curve. We're, you know, planning and doing spots. Is there any indication that, so a half million dollar buses is a lot of money, at least to me? I'm not a bus driver, so I don't buy buses, but a half million bucks sounds like a lot of money, especially when I see what we get for the two and a half, roughly two and a half million that we're spending on the diesel. Is there any, is there any talk, any, any anticipation that as we move forward on the calendar that, that the electric vehicles, the zero emission vehicles might actually get cheaper in the coming years? I guess the question, should we be this far ahead of the curve?
We hear that constantly from the state level, the different groups that are involved in the zero emission vehicles, that prices will get cheaper with the electric vehicles. But when you talk to different dealers from around the country, they don't understand how that is going to happen. You know, diesel buses have not gotten cheaper over the course of time. Battery technology is going to have to improve. Right now, twenty-five percent of our district routes cannot be covered by electric vehicles. There's just not enough juice in the batteries. So yes, there has been talk about that. I don't know how it's going to happen.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mike?
All the safety and security features that we currently have will be able to be transferred over to the zero emission buses with the safety and controls.
That is correct. The quotes that we've received for the electric vehicles have the exact same safety features as we currently outfit our buses with.
Another little question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Sometimes I rant and trap on stuff. I apologize. So from a, from a purchasing perspective, the, the numbers I'm looking at for, for two EVs, is that just the V-ville school district on its own going out and, and finding a vendor and buying two buses? Or is there an opportunity to, to, to gain purchases together in other districts?
So there actually is all through OTS state contract that we have to go through. One of the reasons, and you know, we don't disagree with you whatsoever in regards to the cost, but one of the reasons that we're moving forward is because we have these grant opportunities. So, you know, we're thinking, we, we don't necessarily fall into those higher need districts. We've applied before, we've not gotten the grants. We are a little more confident that we would get the grants. And honestly, we can discuss this more in January, but, you know, we may even be able to put wording in the proposition that it's pending the grant approval before we can forward anything further. We have to go out with the full number. We've already talked about that, so. But it's more of a discussion, I think, that, you know, we can come up with our talking points about, it's the facts. You know, it's not, it's, it's just kind of, I think Dr. Vravsky said it best, we just need to get engaged. We know there's gauges in other communities around us. And just to kind of get an idea, you know, either way, it's information for us to help with the process.
Great job.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. So I think you've done a great job in the transportation department. And I just have to note that when we were campaigning during the vote, Don was there too. As the schools leaving because of people coming to pick their kids up, there was quite a traffic jam. And guess who got out and was directing traffic to help the buses get out? So it's like whatever it takes to get it done, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So with that, we're going to shift over to our operations and maintenance. And Greg, our chief operations officer, is going to take you through the highlights of this one.
Good evening, everyone. So these are the sixty-two folks who get stuff done behind the scenes. And we're very proud of all the support that we do provide to our students around the district. Some of the highlights, capital outlay projects, we do have a hundred thousand dollar projects that we do each year that we do receive with feedback on those. Currently, we have one we're just meeting over at McNamara, where we were splitting apart some of the office spaces where we can get some better usage out of that, along with refreshing of the PA systems. So last year, we did that over at Reynolds. We're doing that over at McNamara as well. We've got two hundred and sixty acres of land that our grounds folks take care of. They're very proud on the days when they can do like the special numbering, you know, for the, for the sporting events and things like that, and striping the fields in a certain way. Our custodians down there mill, they're, they're demoing a robotic floor cleaning machine. So that's something that we may be talking about in future budgets and looking at things like that. The tennis courts we had resurfaced that our kids were playing on last year for the first time with the resurfacing that we're all very proud of. Some of the increases that we're seeing here from our spending is based off of grant money. A lot of our folks were paid out of grants last year. And also, a lot of our material and supply money came from the grants with COVID. Those monies have dried up. So we did build in some incremental increases over the past year, but material and supplies are going out for anyone who's gone and bought anything. year, but material and supplies are going out for anyone who's, anyone who bought anything. You kind of know that. From, on the equipment code here in sixteen-twenty, that one, we're looking to purchase a specific piece of equipment, a tractor over at Gray for snow removal, that, that's reflected in the fifty-seven thousand dollar jump right there, but that's specifically for one piece of equipment. When we go to the sixteen-twenty-one codes, that's the maintenance and the grounds, our equipment actually went down a little bit on that, because we're only looking to purchase one truck this year, as opposed to last year when we purchased two and helped purchase a box truck for food service and really for the entire district to use. So those better equipment did go down a little bit. As with Mike, we are CSEA employees, so they're in a negotiation year, so those contracts haven't been finalized yet, but we would expect the salaries to change a little bit based on that. And then also with the utilities, that's somewhere where we do build in some fund balance in our budget, but NISMIC is currently being bid, so we don't exactly know exactly where that's all going to fall out. Overall, it represents a two-point-three-six increase from last year's budget. And I'll take any questions that you folks have.
Thank you, Rip. We're going to shift over to our final category, admin benefits, staff, and services. How do you think it'll walk us through this area of our budget?
So again, following to here, the staff between cabinet, administrative, support, and the district office and the business office, and our public relations person. So overall, the board of education lies are pretty stable from year to year. The next slide, we can talk about the shifts that you saw again, Renee referenced this earlier, in regards to some of those district-wide certified salaries. Obviously, last year, we had some additional things that may occur during twenty-two, twenty-three that we're not experiencing going forward. So you can see that shift there from year to year, and this has the additional things that support that office and additional minimum increases again. Business administration, we've done some different things with staffing from time to time in the business office. So you see some shifts in the staffing numbers there, kind of fluctuating, or trying to find the right mix of people and the right titles to succeed. You see BOC services consistent, we're at that five percent increase there. We will ship those numbers again once we have a better idea of what our BOCs is with their numbers they're still putting as well. In regards to tax collection, you know, this is when we're working with our top tax collectors and sending out bills and all of those kinds of things. Auditing, we did an RFP a couple of years ago. And legal, obviously, our legal bill was up the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as well, which we don't anticipate to be back going forward. In regards to personnel, you can see here again, minimal changes. BOC services is a lot of what's driving those, those changes here again. There was some breakage in the HR, including retirement, that's what you're seeing with the, the overall decrease there. Records management and public information, we are constantly looking at our processes and making sure that we're keeping track of everything appropriately. We have the public information specialist in here as well. Sexual printing and mailing, this is basically our person, our courier, who takes mail from building to building, and then our postage costs, which obviously are out of our control. In regards to insurance, you see minimal increases here. We did go out with an RFP last year for that, and that's why we're able to hold the fire and liability insurance stable, because we did have some improvements in our pricing for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year that, that allowed us to do that for twenty-four, twenty-five, I would say. Property assessments, refunding property taxes, this is when we bring these to the board in regards to somebody having to deal with their property tax and having that reassessment done. And obviously, the BOC services here, a lot of that is the software that supports us, be it either in the financial software, the business office, the software that student services uses, and the list goes on and on in regards to what's included in there. And I'll just mention again, we do get aid back on all of those. So when you take a look at the overall percentage of about four percent from year to year.
This happens a little, this is not a pop quiz, it's not actually a number I would expect you to have, but you have to know, of that four-point-whatever percent, how much of that is, is due to the, the BOCs?
Well, if you look at, I can't tell you that percentage off the top of my head, but we are pretty consistent with the numbers for BOCs being a five percent increase on anything that they couldn't already increase for us. So throughout the whole entire budget, there's certain areas that we use real numbers for, and then anything that they weren't able to give us the real numbers for, we edit five percent out to.
So is your TRS over there, you know, it was a ninety, twenty? Is that, do we already have that number, so you were able to really apply it, do we know what that number is?
So you never actually know until you finish the year.
Yeah.
And then they take it out of your state date the following September. So we take all of our salaries and then we apply it. Now that TRS number, we always go with the high number to make sure that we have enough, and if anything, we just have fund balance in those lines. For TRS and ERS, we always take the high numbers. Health insurance, same thing, because we haven't committed to a health insurance line yet either from, from BOCs. But we're looking at about seven percent, which I think for health insurance is much lower than national average, because we're part of a consortium now.
So any idea on our tax cap number?
We are still waiting. We reached out, it's that pilot piece. They have until like the week before, we have to certify our tax cap to submit pilots. So last year, literally, we certified, we went in and certified, and I had to go back in and amend it, because somebody came in at the last minute.
We are hoping, we've reached out to council to get an update on our pilots. We're hoping to have all that information in the next year and see, you know, updates to this, as well as the, hopefully, the revenue picture will be down our January twenty-second recession, which we're focusing on that. So hopefully, we have a draft tax cap calculation.
So it is appropriate that Sandra's here tonight, because that's one of the resolutions that the New York State School Boards Association is supporting, is in the past, when you have a pilot that works against your tax cap number, and they want reconsidered, so it's included, it does not hurt you. But I guess supposed to see the legislative action on that this year, right?
So when you look at the overall budget, where we're, we're at currently, we are at about five-point-six percent increase year over year. Our hope is that we can continue to bring that down. It's just been our first staff, there's still additional, additional areas that we're reviewing, some areas that we're double-checking with the changeover from construction to student services, and making sure that we're not double-booking some of that funding because of where we were with budgets, also in the areas of BOCs too, we continue to add BOC services. But have we, when we shifted over at BOCs for some of our contracts and other supports, have we reduced in those general front items? That's the area that we're going through on a regular basis, it stands right now. So we're hoping that by the, by the time we come back in January, that'll be a lower number overall from that percentage increase. But I will remind people that the CPI is somewhere right now around four percent, which says a lot to things that are more expensive, costs, et cetera, of student business. For us, it's about continuing to create opportunities for all of our students. So when you look at those budget drivers, it's the contractual salaries, the BOC services. Again, that's great that it's up one-point-two-fifty, because we're going to generate that at revenue side. Student services up, it's not specific to programming, benefits, and then net service, which we want to highlight, because as we continue to have more and more capital work and projects that are approved by our public, that's, that's ultimately helping us in the end, long-term planning, keeping that stability. And our buses, which is also a component of that. So our next steps, they're listed, we will be prepared for additional questions. So if you have questions come up, please feel free to email us, and we'll get those prepared so that we can have conversations more in depth again on January twenty-second. And then we'll begin preparing those community outreach presentations. And hopefully, we can use a lot of what we've already drafted, once they become finalized. Any other questions or concerns or comments or thoughts or suggestions that you have?
Just one quick question, I don't know why I'm stuck on the EVs, but the, have we had, have we put money in a prior budget, prior year's budget for EVs? Or is this the first?
This is the first.
Okay, so that seven-point-something million, about a billion of it is the EVs we have been pressing for?
Correct. In that, yes, in that proposition. What would be proposition?
But that number will be budgeted for in one year alone?
I'm, I'm just.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just curious, if this is the first time from a budgetary perspective, that it's actually shown up? It sounds like the answer's yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, one question, and then the work session in January, that's when we'll talk about projected income stream and what our tax revenue is looking at, as well as projected changes with, I know as people move into the district, that's more income, which could theoretically actually drive people's taxes down. Correct?
We're hoping to have additional information. We do have some items listed here on slides where we stand with our current equalization rate that drives. I know there's a lot of discussion, my understanding is a bit down of licensing, I believe, with relooking at that, they're not at a hundred percent. But we do have some slides here with the tax levy and where the gases continue to increase, but on that same, you know, what the rate per thousand has been, given where we have been as a community, you can see that, that decrease, which we've talked about, I think, when we approved the, the final tax rate in August. And, you know, it was great for us this year that we did have reassessments, so we got a true picture of that growth that our community is seeing, and knowing that there's more to come, certainly with Micron and all the other companies that are enjoying our central DRC area based on the, that announcement.
Yeah, we can certainly prepare, we had another slide on here, I don't know where mine, but what we propose and then where we end up, but we can certainly get into more details in January when we're talking about revenues in regards to this topic.
We should have the governors at these runs at that point in time, so we hope. But either way, we will continue to give you everything that we have and definitely ask questions. We'll cater the presentation to responding to the questions that come forward. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, what we'll do is include our work session, and then we will go into a retreat for our self-about. And I think Duke wants to give us a short report when we go into that retreat, so we'll hear you, let you do your homework. Okay, so, so we are adjourned from our retreat. Thank you very much. And next meeting, next business meeting, January fourth?
January eighth.
I'm sorry, I didn't play. Thank you. Merry Christmas.